We're gonna get this meeting started. Are you gonna turn these mics up just a little?
Sure.
Please. Okay, hello. Yep, okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor McKay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonski.
Here.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Mayor Quaramare.
If we could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands one nation under God, equal and free liberty and justice for all.
Could I ask everybody to kinda bow their heads for just a minute, for a moment of silence? Dan Weekly lost his wife Brenda a couple of days ago. So if we could please have a moment of silence for that. Thank you, appreciate it. Andy, I'm gonna pass that over to you for just a minute.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you allowing me to make a statement. I would like to take a moment and address some rumors that are out in the community that have me halfway out the door and on my way to becoming the next city manager in Parkland and that I no longer care or am focused on my job here. Parkland may have interest in me, they may have. There's a process underway. They're looking to interview five very well-qualified candidates. They will then determine what their preference is. At the same time, I would be doing my own due diligence. Changing jobs is like a marriage. Both parties need to say I do. To be very clear, I do not feel a need to leave Southwest Ranches. I am very happy here. Parkland offered a unique set of circumstances that did attract my attention. I am not actively looking or pursuing any other opportunities. I do want to assure everyone that Southwest Ranches is very important to me. I feel both a personal and a professional obligation to this town, to this council, to the residents, and to the staff. Until the day eventually comes, whenever it may be, that I leave Southwest Ranches, I will remain 100% dedicated to performing my duties to the best of my ability. And, you know, as I do my homework, I'm talking to a lot of people. I had a great conversation with a good friend earlier. And I'm very aware of how good Southwest Ranches has been to me. And I'll be doing a lot of soul-searching, a lot of thinking about this over the next few days. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay. Public comment. Keith, got anybody? No, no one. Okay. Board reports, any board reports? Seen no board reports. Okay, no. Councilmember comments. Gary, wanna go?
Uh, go ahead.
I'll go first. One thing I'd like to talk about is the social media. I get phone calls constantly on the stuff that people decide to put on Facebook, the town. There's a town site. I don't do any of them, so I know nothing about it. All I know is what I'm hearing. And what I'm hearing is things that aren't very nice. You know, if you don't have anything positive to say to somebody or about somebody and you can't say it to their face, what does that say about yourself? So if you've got something to say, be man enough or woman enough to go to that person and say it to their face. Maybe there's a miscommunications between yous and you can fix it. And all will be well and life can go on. And there's no hate or animosity or words being said behind each other's back. It's tearing everybody apart. As you well know, I mean, this is going on in Washington and look what it's doing to the United States. And the drips and the little digs that you get on social media, you know, as far as I'm concerned, belittles you. If I've got something to say to somebody, I'm gonna say it. But I'm gonna make sure that I have something to back it up. I will fact-check it. I will make sure I have documentation. So just to run your mouth because you think everybody wants to hear you, I think you're wrong. I don't think anybody wants to hear that. I think we're all tired of it. The second thing I'd like to bring up is it actually has to do with what Andy had talked about. And I just think this is something that is a great concern to all of us as colleagues. And I think it's something that we need to talk about and talk to ourselves. So I would like to have some sort of a special meeting or whatever we do where we can get together and we can discuss any issues, any problems, any, anything we want. And I hope I get support on that. And I'd like to do it in a timely fashion, you know, like next week. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
I'll jump in.
Go ahead.
Dee, I wouldn't agree with you more on the social media stuff. You know, for five or six years, I used to post a picture a day. Then I opened my campaign Facebook account. And on some of these other ones that are associated, not with the town but run by people in town, I just couldn't believe the things I was reading about myself. I mean, somebody, anybody who knows me, I don't see color, I don't see religion. That's, my parents brought me up that way. Some guy starts accusing me of being a racist. That's the last time I did much on social media. Now I do things like posts, you know, I posted Freddie's obituary on there. That's the sort of thing now. If somebody wants to criticize me on that, go for it. But I don't go out to my Facebook account anymore because there's one problem. We grew up in a world where if you, like you said, if you've got the problem with somebody, you confront him face-to-face because nobody go through the trouble of writing a letter and putting it in the mail. It's real easy to call yourself Super Bob, jump on social media, torch everybody, troll everybody, write nasty things, and nobody knows who you are. There's no accountability for it. I write you a letter, I call you up, you know who's talking to you. But people write things and say things that are just so wrong. But anyway, so I feel the same way as you do. That's why I've sworn that stuff off. I don't tweet. I don't really post much on Facebook anymore. And the rest of it to me is just a bunch of noise. So. I wasn't clear on what you were asking for time to discuss. Is this about Andy or you said just, it sounded like things in general?
Well, not just general, but, you know, I mean, he has, you know, it's been publicized in the paper. And it's just, I think it's, we need to sit down and discuss what our options are and, you know, how we're going to address it. And just talk is all I'm asking. I'm not actually asking for any actions or anything. I'm just asking for us to be able to get together and discuss it. That's it. And to sit here and discuss it now, I don't think that's the way we wanna go. I think we need to have a, like I said, I don't know what it's really called.
Shade session?
It has to be in a public, open forum. It's not an option.
Okay.
So whether it's here in some other way or some other fashion, I personally think it's way too soon. Andy doesn't know if he's going or not going or staying or whatever the case may be. So I'd say it's a little premature to even go there just yet. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah. I would agree with that. I'd want him, I don't know if we'd be able, I would think we need to try to persuade him one way or the other, one-on-one. So.
Well, what, if I could jump in here just on this subject, I mean, and this, and just so the public knows, this is the only time we can talk amongst ourselves.
Right.
This is a very important aspect. I can't have this conversation with any other member of the council outside of this forum unless we call a special meeting.
Well, he can, but he'll be locked up.
And that's publicly noticed also. But my point being is we're not allowed to. I can't pick up the phone and say, hey, Mayor, what do you think about this? We're not allowed to do that. It's part of the sunshine law. So we need to have this conversation. If we're gonna have a conversation, we need to have it up here or at a special meeting that can be called by the mayor, or I guess, any of us.
The way the charter reads, it takes three council members to call one, or the American call it solo, just so you guys know.
Say it again?
The American call a meeting, a special meeting at any time, takes three council members to call a meeting.
Okay. All right. So, you know, having said that and listened to what Andy had said earlier today, obviously, there's a courtship going on here. You know, and I'm gonna use that euphemistically.
Well, he did. He said it was a courtship.
Okay. And, you know, we need, I guess we need to put a time limit on it, you know. If we're, tell Andy, you know, as a town administrator position, when will you make a decision? You know, are you gonna wait for Parkland to make the decision for you? Or are you gonna make a decision in the process?
I would tell you until he has interviews with the council members up there, I don't think he's, how do you put him on the spot until he actually has interviews or gets farther down the road to see where you're going? I wouldn't wanna, I mean, at what time, at what point something that happens, I would say, yeah, then we can ask him kinda, how much more time do you need to give us an answer, kinda thing? But aside from that, I don't, I don't see what the rush is at the immediate moment. He's still here, he's doing his job. We don't have any issues.
I agree. You know, I'm, I was figuring out how many town administrators we've had. And I think if you take the number and divide it by the number of years where a town, they last about two and a half years. How long are you here? Seven. All right. So we got three out of him alone. If we can keep him a couple more months, I'm happy with that. I think his contract ends in December.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, December of next year.
His contract comes up next year.
Yeah, so.
So where does that leave us on the question? Or does it, just?
Just kicks the can down the road and wait and see.
I mean, Dee, if there are things you feel like you wanna cover, we have no choice. It has to be in the sunshine. So maybe we put an agenda.
It does, but we've had special meetings before where we have advertised and stuff and it's been us. And we could talk amongst ourselves, you know.
No, that's only for legal.
That's shade meetings.
Oh.
With the attorney.
Okay. Well, we could invite the attorney.
I don't think it's the same thing.
You've had meetings.
Thank you, sir. Well, obviously, somebody has more opinions and.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's your phone. I told you, you talk too much.
Apparently, he didn't know what public comment was.
What was just said? I missed it.
He might be very interested in the F.D.O.G. grant. I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Assuming he's a resident, so. He just doesn't know our process.
All right, well, apparently, this isn't going anywhere right away. I mean, I don't, I don't see why it needs to, I mean, personally. But are you, are you done? I think you were done before. So who wants to go next?
Okay.
You wanna go next?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just wanna mention, first off, we just had our first pet adoption here last week. And great success. And wanna thank you, Vet. She quarterbacked it and the staff did a fantastic job. It was really, really very successful. And I noticed there was a lot of donations and there was a lot of cute animals here. And it was very, very, very well.
I think it was six.
We have Halloween at the barn on the 26th of Saturday night from 6:00 to 9:00. Please bring your candy, please bring your kids, please bring, you know, a great attitude 'cause that's what we look for and we have a lot of fun for that. Just an FYI for everybody, the Flowmobile will be here on the 24th from 10:00 to 2:00. I think that's our next council meeting. On January 3rd, we have Mr. and Mrs. Southwest Ranches Pageant coming up. The entries, I believe, are on the website. For all of that, it all goes through the Town Scholarship Fund. A very worthwhile event. The November 16th, we have the Car Show and Chili Cook-Off at the barn from 10:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. Great time to see a lot of really great cars and eat some good chili. And we have, and I'm jumping backwards here a little bit, in October 19th, we have the Arts and Crafts, Country Road Arts and Crafts Festival at the Equestrian Park from 10:00 to 4:00. Great place to get a couple of Christmas gifts and Christmas decorations and things of that nature. And so that's basically all I have for the moment.
Okay. Bob?
I made my comment.
Okay. All right. I'm good. We got the black chain link fence up at the park on 190th. So that's completed. Those of you that have seen it, I hope you're happy with it. Blends in, it's nice, it's kinda, you don't really see it. We also were able, thank you to a resident volunteer, Nathan Finkel. Put in a pathway out at the barn to roll the canisters out to the dumpster or whatever, took out the sod and put in this ground-up asphalt or whatever. And was able to get the chain link fence that didn't get picked up by anyone, put in the dumpster out there. So hopefully it'll get picked up all the way here soon. So I thank you, Nathan Finkel, for your volunteer and help and assistance. So aside from that, I'm good.
Yeah, the park looks great, Mayor. Can I jump back in for one second?
Go right ahead.
I missed an item and that, and I don't know where in the agenda if we wanna talk about this. And that deals with the selection of a candidate for District 3. We wanna wait and do that during administration comments or? Yeah, I'm getting, okay, Andy, shake your hand. All right, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. We'll come back to it. So, all right, we're done. Legal, you're out?
I'll yield to Andy to discuss the District 3 and give him my time.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Keith. Just a little bit more wrap-up on the adoption, pet adoption that we had this past week. And thank you again, Evette, for organizing that. We partnered with Broward County Animal Control and Adoption. And we had a hugely successful event here in council chambers. They brought seven dogs for adoption, Raisin, Mila, Dean, Athena, and Paloma. All found their forever homes and were adopted that day. We had two older dogs, Brewster and Tito, that weren't adopted, but they're part of a program called Lunch, the Lunch Buddy Program, where you can take one of the senior dogs out for lunch. And while out with the dog, the dog is outfitted with a vest which promotes more pet adoptions as well as the shelter. And I know that one of them has been out for lunch, I think, a couple of times since last week. So that's going very well.
Now, I think you have to be out to lunch to do that.
I've been called worse. There were five cats. We had three of them that were adopted. We do have two, Maverick and Suri, that are still waiting to find their forever homes. But it was, you know, I got here, the event started 11 o'clock. I got here a few minutes before. And people were stacked up outside waiting for the event, for the doors to open. And so, you know, people wanted here, they wanted their pick of the litter and going through the animals. And it was, it was just, it was great to see. It was a lot of fun, very, very well-received by the community. And we've already talked about scheduling another event for early this spring. So we'll keep you posted on that. The other thing I wanted to touch on was the vacancy in District 3. I had shared with you all at the last meeting the application for that seat. And did ask you all if you had any changes or any questions with that application, let me know. So I, not having had any changes to that, I finalized that document and I've shared it with Russell so we can make it available to the public. Then I left a document on your spots at the dais today to talk about that. What's critical is applicants must live within District 3 and have lived in Southwest Ranches for a minimum of two years. They must also be a registered voter. Interested parties should complete that application and turn it in. I wanted to get your response. It's easy for us to do this on the message board and promote it that way. It's easier for us to use the website and social media, Facebook, Twitter, and email blast to promote it. I did wanna get some feedback from the council on direct mail. We had wanted to get a list of the registered voters living in District 3 to target. Were unable to do that because the town, when residents come out to vote for mayor and council seats, we vote town-wide on all the districts. So they don't maintain a mailing list by district. So we could, we could get a mailing list of registered voters in town. Doesn't do us any good if we're trying to reach out to that. So we're working on another course of action similar to somebody comes forward with a land use or quasi-judicial item where they have to provide direct mail notice to anybody within, let's say, 1,000 feet. So we've reached out to Melgren for some assistance with that to target that area, to do a mailing. I think it'll be about 650 homes, just based on a quarter of our residences. We have about 2,600 residences in town. So we're looking at that. I would ballpark the cost on doing that mail at roughly 1,000 to 1,250. So I wanted to get some thoughts from the council on whether or not you all think it's a good idea for us to pursue the direct mail or just promote this other ways.
Let me jump in here with you, Andy.
And then I wanna talk about the timeline after that.
Okay. So let me jump in, just voice my opinion. I would tell you that, you know, you want people to know, you want people to participate. But unfortunately, in putting out for a position like that, and we have somebody come forward that may have the qualifications but not involved in the town or ever been active in the town, is not probably someone I'm gonna pick or agree to pick. So I think we gotta, you know, try to keep it with people that have been involved or are involved, or if you wanna get involved or sign up for our next 2020 campaign, feel free. But I don't know why we would spend the money on the mailing. I think the digital overhead board for the people that are involved in town should be more than sufficient. But that's my opinion. And me, whatever we put out or fill in, I would like it in by November 4th so we can call a special meeting.
I do wanna talk about the timeline after that as well.
Well, I'm just telling you mine.
Consensus from the council on whether we should do the mailing or just rely on other media to promote it.
Well, we get to, we can put any stipulations on what we want other than just the application itself, you know.
Absolutely, absolutely. At your discretion.
So, I mean, that has its pros and cons, both of them, you know, both, both things. But it depends on the cost. And, you know, there is kinda like a, what is it? A protocol, a procedure, you know? We all fit a certain criteria to get to a certain spot. You know, involvement in the town and how long and, you know, have you, have you, do you know people? I mean, there's a lot more to it, so I'm not really sure. What do you think, Gary?
I think we need to be as transparent and do as much as possible to further this. I'm all for the mail-out. I think it's money well-spent because, you know, who knows where the challenges are gonna come down the road? And I wanna be able to say, we did this, we did this, we did this. The board out on the road, I think is a great idea. Put that out tomorrow, you know, or as soon as we establish a timeline or an application process. Do the mail-out. If we, I don't know if we have time for the newsletter. You know, whatever notices we need to put out, put it out at any events that we have or anything like that. In other words, we need to go the extra mile. We need to go the extra distance, I think.
All right. So let me ask you, in relation to going the extra mile, going out and letting everyone participate, so to speak. So you're gonna have some people that may come forward that have never been involved in the town but have plenty of qualifications and aren't active and don't know how things run. And you're gonna pick them over somebody that's been active, been involved, knows the ins and outs over somebody that's more so? I just don't see where you would pick, being as involved as all of us up here and on committees and everything else, why you would even consider someone that hasn't been involved in the town?
I didn't, I didn't say I wouldn't. I didn't say I would pick anybody. Nobody, we don't know who's gonna apply for this job and who's not gonna apply. We're guessing, we're spitballing right now. I mean, we really are, we're guessing. And I'm just saying, let's make it open to all qualified candidates. That's all I'm saying.
I.
No, you don't live in that area, don't worry about it.
I'd say you know the people, or most of us know plenty of people live in that area, that if we think somebody might be interested to call them or have the town call them, say, hey, we have an opening on the council, might you be interested? I would rather see that done than send a mailing. But that's just my own personal opinion.
What did we figure the cost of the mailing would be?
A thousand bucks. Between $1,000 and $1,250 is ballpark where I think I'm at.
Yeah, but I don't see it as a cost issue. I see it as an information issue. And we need to get the word out one way. It's the only way I can think of doing it in the timeframe.
Well, I think what you're trying to do is just cross your Ts and dot your Is because.
You better believe it.
Well, I didn't mean it quite like that. I meant like, you know, just so somebody can't come back and say, you know, well, I didn't know about it. Well, why wouldn't you know about it? You are involved in the town, correct? You have served on boards, correct? You have done things for the town. You've worked at the parties that we've had. You've done all these things. You know the issues, you know the ins and the outs. I mean, they don't have to know everything, but they, they should.
But that's not the qualifications for office. Qualifications for office are, as you know, live in the district, reside there for, you know, reside in the town for two years, be a registered voter.
That's true, but that also could be a loose cannon there, too.
Yeah, I know that. But whether or not they get picked's another story. I'm just saying.
That's true, that's true.
The application process, you know.
I agree on the transparency. I don't wanna hear six months later that the town called people and, oh, they picked the guy the town wanted.
Yeah.
Or anything along those lines.
We need to avoid that.
Well, I'm just saying. But that was an option that was just thrown out there.
I mean, I knew when I was running, I was told. You know, there's certain things that you have to do and you need to qualify to be able to get not a right, but a privilege. 'Cause we all know it is a privilege. It's not just our right. Like, living in this town, it's not just your right. It's a privilege to live here. I think it is. I mean, I feel privileged that I'm capable of living here. I feel privileged that I'm here. So, you know, I mean.
I think we need to promote it on our social media sites. You know, we were talking about social media earlier. But we have a Facebook page, we have a Twitter account. I don't know what else we have. And we need to put it on the website. And we do a mail-out, we put it on the reader board. And, you know, we're talking about the next two weeks here. Basically, two or three weeks. And have it do by, in a timeline we'll discuss here in a minute. But we need to be so open and transparent. This is new territory. We've never done this before. And this needs to be, you know, not in some cigar-smoked, filled-back room who gets picked. This needs to be open and transparent.
Well, the perception of that.
Well, it is on YouTube. So if you watch YouTube, it's there. So you are technically advertising.
Yeah, no, no, I'm saying, the more the merrier. The more stuff we do, I think, the better off we are.
The more communications channels we use, the better off we are, the more transparent it is, the less questionable the, uh, the approaches. Dee, what's the issue? Is it the, the thousand or twelve hundred bucks, or is it mailing, or?
I, I just think if you're really involved in the town, like you were, or Doug, or Gary, or myself, you're gonna know what's going on. And if you're not, my concerns would be the, probably the same, not that I would vote, you know, for that person, I'm not saying that, but just because you live here, just because you're a registered voter, you know, uh, I, I, you don't have the right to tell somebody they can apply, but if they're really truly interested, they know what's going on. Everybody knows what's going on, we've been talking about this, and it's all through, uh, the YouTube now, um, it's, it's not a secret, it's not a back, I, I mean, I hate that expression, that...
Backdoor.
Backdoor dealing stuff. You know, nothing here is backdoor anything. Yeah, I've never seen it backdoor anything. And the council wasn't always just us, it was other council, and that didn't go on when they were there either. They were pretty much transparent and upfront, and, and they let the public know, so, I, I mean, I just, I don't see any need to, to go that far, so...
I, I guess my point of view is that I feel like you're asking somebody to come out and participate when they haven't been involved or what, or whatnot, they may have the qualifications, but highly unlikely they would get picked.
I, I think the way you're looking at it might be different than I look at it.
Okay.
We're not asking anybody to come out, we're, we're advertising an open position. That's the way I see it. It, I mean, we're not gonna write this letter, come on out, it, this is, this is gonna be, there's, there's a council position available if you live in this district, which they're mailing to, then, uh, you know, if you're interested, like I, you'll see it in the newsletter, I put something in the newsletter.
So why can't it just go on the website, and it was in the newsletter? It was in the newsletter.
I'm sorry to say, I, I watch the YouTube videos, if you look at the number of people that look at them, it's only like fifty or sixty tops, I think that's the most I've seen, yeah. And I talk to people about the newsletter all the time, did you see what I wrote two months ago that addresses that? No! You live in town, right?
You know, what do we always say? Lock your car doors, and then we just hear about, umpteen, no, I never, nobody ever said that, you know?
Fourth car this year, right, one right on my street.
You know, I mean, you know, it's over and over, I mean...
You tell people that constantly? Bob has told people that, Doug has, I have.
Yeah, doesn't matter, sometimes.
These are the people that could come up and say, okay, I think I'll run for this position. I didn't lock my car door, 'cause I don't know about it, but Gary said it fifteen million times.
But the...
We'll use our own judgment.
It's a transparency issue, because we're really, we're really, we're talking about somebody that's gonna vote, that's twenty percent of the council vote, that's pretty important.
Yeah.
And I think we should do everything in our authority to make sure everybody gets the word.
Yeah.
And, and, and you, and Doug, I agree with you, a hundred percent, sorry. I agree with a hundred percent, somebody that's not as involved, that comes out of nowhere, we're probably, you know...
We're not gonna pick 'em.
Yeah, you know, I mean, come on, give us a little bit of credit here, you know, but we need to make that effort.
Listen.
I think we need to go the distance.
If you guys wanna go the distance, go right ahead. I'll, I'll, I'll support it, but unfortunately, I look at it as wasting somebody's time who's not been involved, and doesn't know, and does, is not active, is, hey, we're putting it out there, it's your district, if you, if you fit the qualifications, come on out, we'd like you to apply, so to speak, or if you're interested, apply, and, you know, you have ten people applying, and five or six of them have never even come to a meeting before. I'm, I'm gonna pick you? Don't think so.
Well, maybe it'll engage them.
Yeah, but...
Maybe it'll engage them to get involved.
Another way to look at this is, is, uh, to me, it looks like chicken soup, you know? It may not cure the common cold, but it, is it, how's it gonna hurt?
Yeah. So I think we have consensus for the most part.
You wanna spend the money? Spend it.
Okay. Alright, timeline.
Alright, alright, Mayor, first of all, thank you for that, just, somebody had said something about staff making phone calls to people, we're, we're not gonna do that, we're, we're not putting our thumb on the scale in any way, shape, or form, but we will get that mailing done and, and get it out, and, and take care of that. The other thing was, I laid out what I, I tried to lay out an aggressive timeline here, and the reason I did that is twofold. One, one is, there are certain town matters that cannot be considered with that vacancy, items that take five votes. So there, there is a, a legitimate business reason for the town, for this council, to move forward with filling that seat as, as soon as possible. The other concern to mine is, of mine, is we get into the holidays, and while we're trying to chum the waters to develop some interest in this position, even people who pay attention will be paying less attention once we get into the holidays. So I'd like to move forward with it quickly, what I'd like to do is, is establish a deadline of November fourth for applications to be received. Uh, our regularly scheduled November council meeting would be November twenty-first, I would suggest to all of you that we set a special meeting with three council members or the mayor's permission, for November fourteenth, the week before, where you can come in and, and just deal with that item and, and discuss it, hopefully make a decision, and that gives us a week to get whoever you appoint up to speed before what would be their first meeting. That's the, the timeframe I'm...
I'm good with that.
I, I do have a question on the timeline, Andy, and that, and that would be when the applications you're saying would be submitted by November fourth, when would we be able to review them?
If we set the deadline of the fourth, as we receive them, we'll start making copies and having it ready for you, so that, because I'm gonna assume that the people that are gonna apply are gonna apply pretty quickly, they're not gonna wait until the fourth, so we'll have that information ready for you, the minute that deadline hits, we'll, we'll finish off the packages for you, so that you'll have everything that's been received.
Alright, now, let me, now let me ask the next question. Let's say, and, and I'm just doing theoreticals right now, let's say we have, uh, eight to ten people, just for, just to pick a number, alright, do we wanna go through any kind of a rating system or anything like that? And I'm talking to, the, the three of us, not four of us. Do we wanna authorize Andy to go through a rating system like we did with the, uh, we had some, uh, board picks that were a while back, I think it was on the comprehensive planning, something to that effect? Do we wanna use a system like that?
So you want him to narrow it down, basically, is what you're saying?
Or see who gets the most points.
Shortlisted.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just throwing that out there for discussion.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, we, we could start that meet, so you'll have, you'll have all the information in advance, we would start that meeting, let's say, with asking you to rate your top three, one, two, three, we'll take the point totals for those, that three, and then your discussion can focus on, let's say, the top three point-getters, instead of, like, let's say, spending a lot of time interviewing, you know, number six, who you're not likely to appoint, try to make your time a little bit more, uh, more focused and productive.
Efficient, yeah. Yeah, that's where I'm going, that's where I'm going with it. So we're in, for an agreement on that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Go for it.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Okay.
Anything, you have anything else, Andy, or you're good?
Uh, no, I think I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Russell, number eight, please.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting and approving an agreement with the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection to receive two hundred thousand dollars and zero cents to complete the Dykes Road drainage improvements, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty town budget, and providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed, back to the council, any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, call the question.
Hold on just one second, um, this is a straight-up grant, we don't require any matching on this? It's purely state-funded?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
If, if I may, Mayor, this item and the next two were, were funds that our lobbyists were successful in securing this past legislative session.
Call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Number nine.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting and approving an agreement with the Florida Division of Emergency Management to receive one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars and zero cents to complete the Green Meadows drainage improvements, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty town budget, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, public comment is closed, council, any other discussion on this matter?